Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us. Please remember, if you were here for the meeting from the public sign-in in the back, we would love to know that you are here with us. Dr. Proctor, can you confirm that we have a call, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Thank you, sir. Senator Clark, if you will make sure that the members that are absent are shown for the record.
Yes, sir.
Snaby and Boust are absent. Counsel, you have an agenda before you. Before I call for an adoption of the agenda, I would like to ask that the motion include the striking or removal of executive session for legal. That will not be necessary tonight as legal representation is not present. With that, I'll yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda excluding the item seven.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? I'll in favor.
I will.
Thank you, counsel. All right, next item. I'm going to go ahead and read it. Mayor Spohs, come on with me.
Good evening, counsel, and Mr. Mayor. So on Tuesday, next Tuesday, we'll be having our January plant expansion meeting. We do have three items on the agenda. Two variants requests from Longhorn, one to add an additional sign. We all know that national brands have their own branding, their sign requirements and so forth, so that's not indicative of anything missing in our sign code. And they're also similar to Chick-fil-A. They are asking to put the dumpster in the front setback. If you remember when we discussed that, again, they think that that frontage road is their rear and campus their front, whereas as the decision is that that frontage road is actually inside the development and they are not facing, they don't have access off of Camp Road, basically, from the vehicle sites. So those are the two, Longhorn. And then we have somebody who would like to put a garage in their front yard. They also have a very narrow lot, can't get to the backyard, don't have a side yard. So there are extenuating circumstances. So again, not a reflection of our ordinance. Other than that, we are moving forward with everything and check the boxes.
Fantastic. Ms. Burges, before I turn you loose, I believe that we are going to be looking at something similar for your board as though as what we do for our other boards. Total participation, asking for individuals interested in signing up to serve. The requirements, I believe, have been posted.
Yes.
And we're looking for folks to fill out some applications and come on and serve for PNZ.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item, hazard mitigation plan. Chief Share, come forward, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. As you see in your packets, I believe the electronic copy was distributed of the hazard mitigation plan. This plan is comprehensive and includes the county as well as all municipalities in. We're required to update it every five years. This is a product of both the city and county officials as well as stakeholders from private entities and organizations. But the purpose of the plan is to prepare us for potential disasters or hazards that they pose against us and for us to have a plan of action as far as mitigating those. This has been developed through a third-party contractor through Higgins County EMA. As you've seen in there, there's several different action items for us to address, both not just us, but the community as a whole. And those items are things that also we can see grant funding for. That's another important part of adopting this is it makes us eligible for being grants to Jima, such as generators and things like that that are mentioned as action items coming up.
If I may, it is not actually included in your packets this evening because there are still some minor changes that need to be made. And it is fairly lengthy. We wanted to try and save a few trees if we could. We did send that out in the electronic package that Lori sent to everyone, so it is there for you to review. And you will have a hard copy of the final version for the council meeting on the third.
Thank you.
It's my honor. Chief, I would assume that this is going to go through legal approval for the final few edits that are needed?
Yes, we're working on it, Mr. Siphon. I believe I should have the final edits back probably tomorrow.
Okay. And this is for the City of Jasper, right?
Yes, the City of Jasper and Higgins County and also the incorporated and incorporated municipalities.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to do your point, counsel note for the public, there's nothing substantial that's changed. It's just more, you know, rework incorporated in the date they said, so.
Small typos.
We just want to change some of those.
Counsel, any additional information needed from Chief or the City Manager's Office? Fantastic. Counsel, is there any objection if this being can send agenda item at the next call of meeting? This will go through legal approval? Any objection for that? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item.
All right, we're ready. Next item we have is solicited as technology, I believe, on the agenda. We have run into a little bit of an issue with some of our MDT, MDT for mobile data terminal or computers that we have inside our responding apparatus and our command vehicles. This is an item that we had originally budgeted for, but we had to cut it. We were planning on starting to replace these at a circuit provider every two, every two years. Kind of replace two of them or three of them to get them rotated out without doing a large purchase. Unfortunately, we ran into an issue where we started to have some mechanical issues with them, well, hardware and software issues where they're, they're ended up inoperable. So far, I believe we have three of them that are not working at the time or giving struggle working intermittently. They allow us to be able to see the computer-aid dispatch, do manual one. A lot of times sensitive information is pushed out through that, so it's not put out of the airwaves as far as the radio channels. And allows our operators to get more information on the way to scenes. It also allows us to operate our RMS system to where we do our patient care reports and our fire reports, as well as vehicle location, many other different functions that we use for it. They are mounted in the apparatus. We've got some different options because I know this isn't listed, so we'd like to mount like purchase, lease options in different places. And those quotes are included in your packets, I believe.
So if I can, Ms. Goldner, Mr. Douglas, or Chief, discussing the lease agreement that was proposed versus a outright purchase, can you discuss the price and the benefits?
Be glad to. I do want to mention, though, that that lease agreement, that portion of the quote has been under Mr. Siphon's review. And we did get some very late comments back on that. It looks like that that agreement is going to need some revisions due to state statutes regarding length of lease agreements that are allowed for municipalities to come into. So if the outright purchase, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, is right at $35,000, and that is for seven laptops, and then if you were to lease that, it would be $11,000 a year. Is that correct?
Roughly, looking at, we've got two different vendors there with two different types of product, same thing, but they're different versions, Ford or Chevrolet.
One is better than the other.
Well, that's true. One's better than other.
Probably not sure what's.
But, when we looked at this, one thing we saw about the lease option, while I guess it's less money in cover right now, at the end of the three-year lease period, you have paid the same amount as if you purchased outright once you do not own the product. So then at that point, we would have to talk to them about a buyout if we wanted to. So we would end up basically through the term of the lease, paying the full price of the product and then turn around and have to do a buyout if we want to keep them, if we did not want to turn them in and redo a new lease for new equipment.
Do you know the price for buyout?
No, sir. That is based on the fair market value at that time.
Yeah, they'll, their model is, if I could, Chief and I've talked, and I think the idea is if, if you're going to be a community that's continually updated and changed and then stay with it, then maybe that's works with your model of just budgeting $11,500 a year, and then you're just never going to bottom out. You're just going to continually keep getting them. So I didn't know if Mr. Lundy had anything.
Well, the, the terms, I understand, but the technology, how often does it roll over with something that you, that you feel like you need to have?
It depends, but this, this is a period we're talking about basically, and that turns over that technology, that makes pretty quickly. But to put a quantitative number, whether it's two years, three years, four years, or five years, that's where we'll cast.
Depending on what happens for the.
Depending on what happens, exactly.
And then I know at our last meeting, you got part ownership of a leaf machine, leaf vacuum. Is that one of the vehicles this would have to?
No.
No?
This would not.
What about dump truck?
Dump truck, no, sir. We're not going to dump truck, okay? We're going to stick with the red trucks, except for rescue is why we're sticking.
There was going to be a question about the leaf back being red, so.
Well, I mean, if it helps public works, I'm all for support Josh and Charles back there. We can paint it red, we can do that, support them.
I almost couldn't pull that off because someone was gritted over it.
He just, he looked like he had something to say. I just wanted, and Mayor, I do want to point out that although Lindsey is not here, we did talk about this, you may recall going through some of the budget proceedings last fall. And this is why in local government, things are going to come up. So for instance, when we went through the budget process, this was something that Chief knew that he was going to eventually have to do. However, when you're looking at some capital needs and you say, okay, well, turnout here, hoses, I mean, where does it stop? So it stopped with those two. We knew that, well, maybe we could keep making this work, but then when the errors happen, it's like, okay, well, we're going to have to do two or three. So what are the options we can present to you all? Now, the comfort level that we have, the staff level is, the way that we budget for splosts is to collect a certain amount. So for instance, if we say we're going to collect 85,000 a month or 90,000 a month, these capital budgets that we put in for the fire station, the engine, the other items are set based upon the expected revenue from, you know, a conservative approach, 85,000 or so. If we're collecting, you know, 100, 105, 95, if we're collecting over, that is the margins that do allow us to help with some of the operational elements. So the 35,000 is something, and obviously we want to bring this up to you all tonight. And then I think on the third, we will have full counsel, and I'd like to be able to share this as well, say, although this is unbudgeted, it doesn't concern us because in the whole scheme of things, if we have a good December, January, February collections, which we will, that could be the margin that helps us to say, well, we're just going to pay for this outright in cash and not have to take it out of your fund balance, your savings account from the general fund. But if you've overextended yourself in one or more areas, and this one in splosts, and we say, well, we're going to be aggressive in our collection rate, and then we fall short, it removes that margin for us to use. So that's why we wanted to be very forthcoming with, you know, if he was talking about $100,000 vehicle, that would be something pulse or concern. But for the technology needed for them to respond to emergency situations and the price being 35,000, and knowing that we've already had pre-owned equipment in there, we think it would be a wise decision to take some of the extra sploß funding and then just utilize that.
Can that come from CFO also?
Pardon?
CFO, can you discuss that?
Absolutely, yes.
Lindsey?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. She'll see this.
But the answer is yes. Do we have to discuss this with her?
Yeah, she's comfortable with it. She did not like the lease.
Counsel, she, I'm sorry.
She did not like the lease option because of the buyout.
Share that sentiment. Counsel, any additional information specifically that you may have? I'm going to advance to the next council meeting. I am not going to ask that this go on consent. I believe this needs to be through discussion since there are two options yet to be determined. Thank you, sir. Next item, City Manager's update. Mr. Davis, Ms. Goldner.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll just kind of keep my brief in terms of, some of you saw the email from Attorney David Siphon relative to the fact that you have an election ordinance that we had adopted January 6th to get it into the newspaper, which, as you've seen in the newspaper, you've seen the advertisement that the board of elections have put forward. However, on January 7th, the day after our meeting, they had, and they're the controlling entity that we have an agreement with dating back to 2021, so we had a multi-year agreement, and they had deemed it appropriate to do a three-day qualifying period. So Mr. Siphon's legal opinion is we just need to modify our election ordinance that we adopted on January 6th to reflect and to mirror that of what the board elections did just for consistency. So that's going to be presumably all the consent agenda because I think it's more procedural. But beyond that, I don't have any other substantive updates. I'm going to the team, Ms. Goldner, Mr. Davis, et cetera, have some really good information to share.
Ms. Goldner?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So very important on the USDA project, we did sign the, we had our closing, we did sign the loan with USDA on the 17th, and so we are well into that now. USDA has provided the funds to pay off United Community Bank and our interim financing loan that we had with them. At the DDA meeting on Monday evening, we will have basically an agreement to end that IGA where they had done the signing, you know, for the short-term financing as well, and that will take care of that. So staff did go to a progress meeting for this project on Tuesday, and that's typically with both of the contractors. That would be Reeve Young for the plant expansion side, and then also with T. Stanco for the Fort Maine. Fort Maine project is essentially done. They, they have completed construction, they have completed their testing, they have a bit of dress-up work that they are doing along the Fort Maine route. There are some property owners that they had crossed, you know, in the yard, and it has been terrible temperatures, can't get the grass that, that they need the sod to go ahead and do that. So they have worked out with those property owners that they will do that as soon as sod is being cut again and they can get back in that. But in general, just minor cleanup type activities there. For Reeve Young, they did advise that they have adjusted that final completion date for the project out roughly 30 days. It went from March the 17th to April the 14th now, and that is largely due to some weather issues that we've had. There were several days where we had very heavy rain. The plant saw over five and a half inches of rain towards the end of December out there, and so that definitely affects their ability to do some work. And they are largely in a testing to commission new portions of work out there. And so as they're testing, they're finding things that need to be resolved, so that may cause testing to have to happen again. And so they had some job site issues that have kind of delayed them a little bit as well, but everything is on, still moving forward, and we anticipate April 14th will be our substantial completion date.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, final completion. Okay, correct. So my next item is going to be our events. So at February's council meeting, that's going to be the beginning of staff coming before council and actually presenting events for approval and for celebration. So there are certainly going to be events that staff will continue to handle without bringing to council for approval and things like that. And that's a fairly substantial number. And looking back through our calendar last year, there was something nearly every single weekend going on at Leeneton Park, Jasper City Park, things like that. There were events that were being held in Stigall Alley that were sponsored by some of our downtown businesses. There were events like the food truck rally where it's, you know, every Wednesday night, things designed to bring people to our downtown. So what we want to do, though, is bring those signature, the longstanding events that are kind of our signature events here in the city, before council to celebrate them and to get that formal approval granted. So at the February 3rd meeting, that's actually going to be a fairly heavy event meeting. We'll have five different requests before you. We will be talking about the 2025 season of the farmer's market. We'll be talking about Downtown Live and those proposed dates. We'll be talking about Art Walk and the proposed dates for that. We will have the Chamber presenting on the Marble Festival and the Associated Parade that goes along with the Marble Festival. And then also 515 Cornhole, which is not necessarily an event that requires a lot of public work or public safety effort, but it is becoming a year-round event. It is something that occurs on Mark Litfield every Thursday evening, and it has grown to be extremely popular. And so we do want to celebrate that event as something that brings a lot of folks to our downtown on Thursday evenings. So the sponsors of all of those events will be here on Monday to talk about those events, to answer any questions that you may have. I did want to let you know, in looking back through our calendar, we have nearly 20 signature events, what we consider to be signature events every year. And that is through that kind of March, April, through the beginning of December timeframe. And that can be anywhere from Main Street all the way to Leeneton Park. Those seem to be kind of that corridor is our popular area for having events. That can be Downtown Lives, Art Walks, all of the parades that we have downtown throughout the year. There's also events, though, like the Trick or Treating on Main and Long Table on Main by North Georgia Family Partners. We have Jeep Fest. We have two very popular 5K runs, the Flapjack Run and then also the Marble Festival Run, which is put on by Methodist Church here. There's Zombie Fest, which is wildly popular in Leeneton Park. And then an event that we know is going to be extremely popular every year that the Chamber put on for the first time last year in December, the Snowman Stroll. So just, you know, we have a lot to celebrate in here, and we have some really great events that happen throughout the year.
And then part of it, Mayor and Council, I think by and large, for the last several years, the talent that you all have hired has continued to change the way that these events are conducted, in my opinion, the way they should be in terms of the, the safety first, the professionalism, just the overall atmosphere that you get with. So, you know, part of the celebration component is also to essentially say, there is a quality of life component to our team as well. Oftentimes, when we get into the event season, it's easy to, to just take for granted that it happens. And I think Mr. Hannah and the mayor and then some others have seen firsthand, you know, grabbing one of those barricades is not easy and slinging them, the, and so it's, this is not an opportunity for us to try to say, well, we're trying to, you know, not do our jobs or do this, but by and large, the, the team that you have, especially four of them that are planted back against the wall, they do a great job of, of the, the normal operation stuff, you know, if you say the Monday through Sunday, because you've got public safety, you've got streets, you've got water, wastewater. It's, it's a non-stop. And the one reason you'll hear me say things like, well, you know, Finance Department is going to be working on the budget. No, that was Lindsey. You have one individual, and you have payroll. So the same goes for Josh and his team and Chief and his team. And I know we're going to get into some more specifics to just kind of let you all know because I think it's important that it is celebrating the team as well, that we do want them to have a good quality of life in these events that we feel like we can continue and can sustain it. It could be a situation where if something comes before y'all or comes to a committee, it may not necessarily get a recommendation from staff, not because we don't want to do it. It's a matter of we may be extended beyond the fact that, you know, we've got five individuals in the, the street department, and when you're having an 18-hour day on top of a, you know, 40-hour a week, you know, we've got to look after our, our team. So I think it's going to be a good opportunity to reignite the, you know, because we are having good participation from the, the public. So I want them to understand too that you all continue to budget for these positions and for these intangibles, so to speak, and, and when you quantify it, it is the quality of life for our community. And Mayor, I think you've said it best, that you can come to these events and not have to spend any of them and have a fun-filled evening or weekend. So that's all I wanted to say is, you know, we're going to continue to be selective and make sure the quality's there. To Ms. Goldner's point, we've got, you know, most communities have about 10 to 12 signature events. Us spending about 20 is about where we just need to keep it. Five.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Goldner, you mentioned the five that would be present at the February meeting.
Yes, sir.
Those that are hosting or those that are holding the event, the others that we mentioned, I'm assuming will be reaching out to get them to be present before council soon?
Absolutely. So these events occur or start a little earlier, and definitely the parades, we want to get scheduled sooner rather than later so that the expectations have a way out, and they can do their appropriate planning as well. Next month, def, or I'm sorry, March, you'll have Long Table. It will be June Ash with North Georgia Family Partners. I'm not sure if she'll be talking about the Jeep Fest camping as well, but then we will want to get Leslie Miller and Alliance Club here very soon as well because 4th of July is, will turn around and it will be 4th of July. So, yes, you will have at least three or four at every meeting here coming up.
Thank you, Mayor.
And there may be others.
Absolutely. Off topic, one that we did mention, the Homecoming Parade. That may be something.
Well, parades.
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you. Next item, Public Works Weather Events Update. Mr. Davis, come forward, please, sir. I had a microphone, I'd hit it, too.
Oh, no.
I know.
Good evening. Since the end of the year, we've had eight days that we've had to solve the brine. So it's kind of took a hit on us. So it was, first day was January 6th, we had to run four loads of brine. That was, we had five guys working that, and that costed $625 just doing that. January 9th, that was the snow wind, where we actually got snow. That was five days. That costed $4,600. That was between the brine and the salt and having, having guys stay in the night, that was quite costly. So if I have had a snow plow, I wouldn't have been able to dig it, but.
A little bit. A little bit.
But.
Was you painted red? Chief Share.
It was red. I said it for evidence. I might need to paint it white, but just to keep fire chief.
I've been there.
But as a total, I think we used 7,500 gallons of brine, 39 tons of salt, 183 man-hours. So estimated worth was 4,500 for a grand total of $15,200. So this included 20th and 21st, just for the potential of the event that we didn't get for the simple fact that we couldn't, we, we used salt for that, we didn't use brine. The air conditioning stuff, it would have been a freeze. As of, that was it.
Awesome.
Also, we have Southeast, we're moving in, what day next week? Wednesday?
Next week or the week after?
Moving into the Seaport, to move in for the playground. I also have Tradition Trade Service coming into more countries. So just a heads up on that.
So may, some of you may have seen my email earlier today. So when we got the word that Southeast, that the equipment was on its way, we needed to go ahead and start getting prepped out there. And when we had met with them later last year, I guess that was maybe in October, about the possibility of fulfilling all of the. the phasing of playground equipment there in the main playground area, we had identified two trees that really were going to be an issue. One of them is in the parking lot, it is right up against a parking space, and that tree is dead. So that one is a liability, that one will be coming down tomorrow. The other one is actually just inside the fencing of the playground area, and it has gotten so large and apparently is somewhat restricted that it is growing, the roots are coming up out of the ground, and Southeast identified that as a major trip hazard. That is not what you want inside of a playground area, particularly when you are going to now have smaller children in there, younger children that will be excited and running, so we need to go ahead and get rid of that tree as well. We hate getting rid of beautiful, large trees, but in this case, we really have got to, we have no choice. So we have posted that on our social media page, it seems to be fairly well-liked, very popular post, everyone is very excited about the end of the playground equipment coming, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. So the work, I believe, begins tomorrow for the tree work.
Yes.
Yes.
The parking lot will be blocked off, as well as the walking trail, the playground equipment, second week of February, it looks like, coming in?
We have not gotten a certain date unless that was something they all heard this afternoon. They were saying that they thought first week of February, I want to give it a little bit, just in case there is another advent of bad weather that may delay shipment, but we anticipate everything should be in place by the second week of February.
Mr. Davis, the location of the new playground equipment, it's replacing outdated equipment, where's the new playground? That's what I'm going to go with.
It'll be inside the fence of the playground that's there now, just to the right of it.
The large children's playground?
Yep.
It'll be added to, so you'll have both age groups and categories in one fenced-in area.
Yep.
Which is phenomenal for families with children that are aged.
And he also said that he could probably buy a shade or remove the trees.
Blackened car, you're good.
And I would like to add, I think Councilmember Hannah can attest to the fact that when we began this journey, you know, talking about it, saying, how are we going to finalize this final phase of the small kids' playground? And I think, I think when you look at it with fresh eyes, if you were to look and notice, okay, the fence, the way that it was configured in that open area, and the way that the barrier was holding back the rubberized mulch, it's like, okay, so now it's starting to make sense, here's the final completion of what we had set out, you know, almost five years ago. And I think, again, the mulch in and of itself was something that we're trying to do correctly, so we're going to continue to add on top of the existing to be in compliance. We did have a certified playground inspector come and review and inspect the existing playground, gave it, you know, full stars, and said, the only thing is, when we install the new one, let's put some more rubberized mulch. So the cost associated with it is not something that you can just go and get a few bags and pour in, as Mr. Hannah and I would love to do, it's just not the safe way to do it for our kids. And I know, Mayor, you've got something else on the weather you want to bring up, but I do want to, while Josh is standing here, and y'all, y'all probably get tired of it, and I hope that we continue to get tired of hearing me praise the city staff that you all assembled, because we've essentially got eight department leaders, and Josh is standing here, but all eight folks, Lindsey included, who's not here, I have never worked with in twenty years, and March will be twenty years, I've never worked with a group collectively that are so well-boiled and awesome to work with. There is not one single person that has not stepped up in any of the events dating back to the potential rain event in September, you know, all of us sitting together, all of us coordinating, everyone finding their niche and completing it. Josh has taken ownership of certain aspects of the job, and I think it's indicative that the motorists, our residents, people who come to our community, has probably seen a difference with his leadership in getting things done. I think the fire chief and police chief appreciate it, because from a public safety perspective, you know, there's always that tinge of anxiety of the motorists or school buses, and Josh has taken the heart to making sure that it's safe. So I do want to commend him. The other team, it's not to just point him out, it is truly, if you were to see the efforts that we put into it, it's phenomenal.
Thank you, sir. Following up on that, I will say, Mr. Davis, thank you to your crew. I had compliments from business owners about the way we were reacting to weather events, I had comments from other elected officials outside of our organization, I had comments from within our organization, and I had comments from employees of other government agencies and citizens. So thank you.
And I'll just run the praise train. These park looks amazing, my friend, so thank you for all your work up there, you and the guys did a fantastic job. I know the work continues, but.
Looks much better.
Oh my gosh, not a day different, so you might not drive a red truck, but we appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, before I ask for adjournment, the other weather-related event that I do want to speak about is in reference to the warming center. Our community has seen something recently that is a long time coming. The faith community, the nonprofit community, the businesses, restaurants, and the county government, sheriff's office, and the city all stepped up, had meetings, had discussions, and came together to make sure that those that were exposed to the elements during these severe weather events would have some more warmth together. I am thankful and excited to say that Revolution Church operated their facility, other entities of the faith community offered volunteers, offered food, offered assistance, the city stepped up, offered certain aspects of this, and every single night, this last go-around, we did have individuals taking advantage of the warming center. It is not a huge amount of people, the first night we had one, and every night after that, we did have two individuals, they were not always the same two. And so there is a need out there for this, and I'm thankful for those individuals that stepped up, lots of people.
Colonel, if I could, first of all, commend your church, and also make sure that we dedicate some sort of effort in making sure that that commitment is sustainable. I want to, it's nice to know that they were willing to do it, it'd be nice to know they're willing to continue to do it as if that's just part of the extended team, so.
Yes, sir. Those conversations started last night.
Okay.
Absolutely. Anything further from the administration awards they elected? Department heads? And that's it. Counsel, any other motion to adjourn?
Sooner, sir.
Motion second to discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel.